Evening workshop last night, including our three administrators who are, our three principals who are here, Mrs. Calms, our three assistant principals, and our director of, Mr. Wanda, and our director of special services. It was a great exercise. I think we will see the results of that when we get to the goals later on today. So we have some minutes. Did you guys have an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Any changes? Okay, so we'll call those good. There are warrants on the table, and I guess we have a couple of line item transfers?
We do have a couple line item transfers, Dr. Berthew, to the committee for your consideration. Ms. Kay Hillman, who's the department head for the foreign language department, is requesting to move some money, fifteen dollars and fifty-three cents, from the foreign language textbook line to the foreign language AV line. And this just helps us make sure that the money is available in the appropriate lines for the expenditures being made. So I am recommending that that amount be approved for transfer, fifteen dollars and fifty-three cents, from foreign language textbooks to foreign language audiovisual.
Is there any questions on this transfer? Okay.
And then we also have a line item transfer request from Mrs. Blaisdell down at the primary school. And what is being recommended is that two thousand dollars from the primary school workbooks be transferred to the reading supply line there, and that would, in order them to purchase some more handwriting without tiers materials from the appropriate line. I think in terms of the budgeting for all of this, some of the materials that are actually non-consumable ended up being in that consumable workbook line, and so we want to make sure that they're apportioned appropriately. There's no impact upon the line, and in fact, Mrs. Blaisdell also, over the summer, worked with Mr. Adams and, I imagine, Mrs. Galloway, and they did a really thorough inventory of all the existing workbook materials that are down there, particularly the math journals, and that actually made it so all of these appropriate materials could be ordered without having any increase to the lines and make sure that all the students had the materials they need. So there's no impact upon the line. It just puts, once again, the money where it needs to be and aligns it in the line that's appropriate for the purchase. And we also want to, you know, commend the administration for taking their time to make sure that that inventory took place, and so we have that good inventory of the materials that we have. I recommend approval of both of those.
Any questions on this second line item? Okay. Okay, next item is superintendent's report and the MCAS results.
Yes, I just have a few quick overview things that I'd like to bring to everybody's attention before I invite the principals up to give an MCAS review. For the viewing audience, and also for the folks here at Town Hall, we've been looking at a series of photos that were taken today, I believe, when the students in the fifth grade, in preparation for their nature's classroom visit or trip next week, were working on the T-shirts that they'll utilize, some activities to orientate them to the nature of what nature's classroom is about, and to begin having them get ready for that wonderful experience that always has proven to be very beneficial to the students on many levels, academically, socially, emotionally. We want to thank all the parent volunteers who are going, as well as the teachers and the administration. And we are hoping for beautiful weather like this next week when they're out there, but understand the rain clouds might be moving in. But they'll have a fantastic time regardless, so some really fun things and interesting and educational things happening. I also wanted to make you aware that there is going to be a flu vaccine clinic by the Nishoba Board of Health. It'll be Wednesday, October 16th, in the cafeteria at Thomas C. Passios. That will be from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. People are asked to bring insurance cards. That's required for billing. You won't be charged. If you do not have an insurance charge or insurance, or choose not to provide your insurance charge, there is a charge of fifteen dollars. But children under eighteen years of age and younger are excluded. So that's the community health flu vaccine clinic, and we hope a lot of people will come out and take advantage of getting their flu shots for the upcoming season right here in town. So, two quick announcements. With that, we're going to switch over, and once again, this year, we were very pleased to be able to share with the community some great performance by our students across the district, and continued good growth towards those goals set for annual yearly goals. We're still off the target with some of our subgroups, and I know we continue to work diligently to close those gaps with certain of our subgroups. We've had some success in that. And so we're going to start with the primary school and head up from there. So, Mrs. Blaisdell, you're here to talk about the third grade results.
Thank you for having us here tonight to share some of the news relative to the MCAS performance. I will be reporting on the third grade results. We had a hundred and twenty students who took the MCAS for the very first time, third graders, last year. Obviously, it was the first time for them. Third grade has been taking the MCAS for a while, but it was the first time for them. And we spent a lot of time preparing them and letting them know that they were capable of doing very well on these assessments, and that we had prepared them well. So we didn't have a lot of anxiety around that for students, which I think was very positive. In the area of ELA, there were eighty students, or sixty-four percent, who scored in the advanced and proficient range of functioning. There were twenty of those students that were in the advanced range, and sixty in the proficient range. Thirty-eight students, or thirty-two percent, were in the needs improvement range. And sixteen of those students were within three points of achieving a proficient score. So we had a high number of students that were at the very high end of the needs improvement range. And then two percent of the students were in the warning range. In the area of math, ninety-seven students, or eighty percent of our third grade students, scored in the advanced and proficient range of functioning. Forty-five students, that's thirty-two percent, were in the advanced range of functioning, and fifty-two students, forty-three percent, in the proficient range of functioning. So that was one of our areas that we really wanted to celebrate. That was a good achievement, to have that many students that were in the advanced and proficient range of functioning in the area of math. You know, our high need students, students with disabilities, students that require Title I services, students on 504 plans or ELL, receive ELL instruction, or our low-income students, they continue to lag behind somewhat their peers, both in ELA and math. We're addressing those areas with tiered instruction, individual educational plans, curriculum accommodation plans, and we will continue to do so to address those student needs. Student growth data is not available for third graders, as this is their first time taking it. We have been able to look at some really nice graphs that show our students' growth over time, and how well they perform when they're in the 10th grade. This is one of the first years that we'll be able to see that whole range of when they start taking MCAS, and, well, last year was, and then graduate and take their final test in 10th grade. Third grade teachers are in the process of analyzing all of the scores and completing an item analysis to identify any strengths and weaknesses in the curriculum and the instruction that's provided. To do this, teachers look at the data and items from the last couple of years to identify the trends that may be in the data that talk to us about which areas we need to do more work in, and which areas we are showing significant strengths in. So that's a little bit about the third grade scores. Do I have any questions?
Yeah, Jill, can you, Mrs. Blaisdell, can you give us a comparison with last year at all?
Last, we did slightly below what we, how we had performed last year in the area of ELA. It wasn't a significant difference, but there was a difference. And to have that many students in the needs improvement range was concerning to us, and we'll be looking at just some of the reasons why. And in the area of math, we've scored higher than we had in the previous years. We do want to continue to look at that data in respect to how did we do last year? How did the students that performed on the MCAS assessments, how did they do last year compared to this year? But they are different students as well. You know, it's like comparing apples and oranges. We have to look at that with a cautious eye. And we really focus on, because the students are now in the fourth grade that took the third grade assessments, it's the job of the fourth grade student teachers, et cetera, to work on the individual students' needs. And it's our job to look at the curriculum from pre-K through 3, and making sure that we're preparing them to take that first initial assessment.
Okay. Looks like Mrs. Calms has put the data up on the wall over here. So what are we looking at? So it does look like there's a spike in needs improvement this year. It's not huge.
Yes, compared to last year, yes.
Right. Okay, I'm sure your school improvement plan will address that somehow.
Yes, sir.
In May, when we get there.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Santry?
So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting me here tonight to discuss our Turkey Hill Middle School's 2013 spring MCAS testing. As you know, the official MCAS scores came out, were made public in late September. Turkey Hill continues to be a Level II school through the state system of accountability for not meeting gap narrowing goals in our subgroups, as well as our aggregate scores. Our overall annual PPI score this year was a seventy-three, with the state goal being a seventy-five. The state accountability system designates schools in a Level 1 through 5 system, Level 1 needing the least amount of intervention, and a Level 5 needing total takeover by the state. Approximately eighty percent of the schools in the state are designated either a Level 1 or a Level 2 school, and that is the least amount of intervention from the state. So our goal this year was to become a Level 1 school, and we missed our mark. And as building principal, it's my responsibility to lead the students and the faculty to continuous improvement, and the responsibility lies with me to move our school forward. So it's my responsibility with the improvement of the test scores, that also lies with me. So having said that, our MCAS scores show some mixed results that I would like to share with you. Areas in which we need to improve are in our subgroup population, particularly students with special needs, where we saw a decrease in not only student growth, but we saw a decrease in students scoring in the proficient range in that subgroup. We also saw our median student growth scores below forty percent in two of our nine tested content areas in the building. And as you know, the median growth scores are a measure set forth in my school improvement plan, and that's how we determine growth and progress. So I'll be meeting with my school advisory council in the next few weeks to review this data, and to update our school improvement plan, to present that to the school committee, I believe, in November. We also saw some encouraging data. We showed improvement in reducing the achievement gap in our low-income students. And in eight out of the nine of the tested area, content areas, we were above the state average in students scoring in proficient and advanced. And in some cases, like sixth grade mathematics, twenty-two percent higher than the state average with students scoring in the advanced and proficient levels. And forty-four percent of our students scoring in the advanced range at the sixth grade mathematics level. In fifth grade, science and technology, twenty-one percent higher than the state average with students scoring proficient or advanced. The state also rates our school with using a percentile ranking. This percentile ranking is an indication of the school's overall performance relative to other schools that serve same or similar grades. Turkey Hill Middle School's percentile is a seventy-second percentile, indicating a highly, a high-performing school. But our goal is continuous improvement in all areas, so we have to continue to improve, continue to grow, and how do we do that? So the state suggests guidelines for schools in Level 2 status with strategies on how to improve. And those strategies parallel those goals and objectives that I have in my school improvement plan. These strategies include disaggregating the data for those subgroups, and in order to determine what our strengths and weaknesses are when compared to the state standards, we use this model in our results model. We've been using this model at the middle school for quite a number of years now, but only in the past couple of years have we been reporting back out to school committee and my school council on what the results are of those meetings. So we will continue to do that. And the state also suggests that a Level 2 school review and update their school improvement plan. As I said earlier, I plan on doing that within the next two or three weeks, meeting with my school advisory council to present that information to you. So we're going to continue to employ our best practice to foster those critical thinking skills and problem-solving skills, to utilize our data-driven decision-making through our results process, and to improve and prepare our students not only for MCAS tests, but for lifelong learning and responsible community membership. So are there any questions that I could try to answer?
Questions? Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. We know MCAS is just one of those, one measure that we use to measure student achievement. We're very proud of our results as a district, and especially at the high school, we're proud of our results as a school. Although we continue to be a high-performing school, we did fall from a Level 1 status to a Level 2 status, and we missed that status by a point. So our goal is to get back to Level 1 for this year. Last year, we know it was a transitional period for the school. Eighth grade became part of our high school scores. So the teachers and students, there was a transitional period that took place, new building, new schedule, and the schedule did have a bit of an effect, I think, especially around teachers and how to, you know, going from dropping a day to, you know, having a long block, so assimilating to the high school culture. Now we have a year under our belt, so hopefully we can better do those things. And then adjusting to the curriculum and the Common Core, and making sure, especially we found with the eighth grade math, and how some of the conferences that teachers went to, and the information they had, was that most of the things that were going to be tested were tested on standards that were previously, that we previously worked under with the 2011 frameworks, mass frameworks. And this year, they really ratcheted up with the Common Core-type questions, and our students weren't as prepared as they could have been had we known that those were the types of questions that they were going to see. But now knowing that, we're going to, you know, make sure, make a concerted effort to make sure our kids are prepared. So we're targeting the improvement of the eighth grade scores in all, and we've allocated resources and personnel to those areas. We've made an effort to lower the class size, especially in science. We have one of our department, the science department head, Mr. Hill, is going to be, is teaching two eighth grade science classes this year. So we've brought those, the class size, down to about twenty-one students in our eighth grade science classes. We've also, they've worked hard to infuse technology into the science curriculum, making things more visual for students. As for math, like I said, they're looking to make sure that we're aligned with the Common Core, and that we've increased our expectations and the rigor, especially of that Common Core eighth grade class that we've started this year. And for ELA, they're really working on organization and independence. They've targeted those areas because just they're working with the seven habits, or the habits of highly effective teens, and making sure that our students are prepared for not just eighth grade, but prepare for high school. As for the successes of our 10th grade scores, there's certainly a lot to be proud of. This year, our ELA scores for 10th grade, we're at the ninety-seventh percentile advanced proficient. That's the top twenty-nine percent of high schools in the Commonwealth. Our math scores, we're ninety-six percent advanced proficient, and that puts us in the top six percent of schools in the Commonwealth. And our science scores jumped up quite a bit from last year into the ninety-seventh percentile, and that's the top two percent of all high schools in the Commonwealth. And I'll just take some of these numbers a little bit further. In ELA, one hundred and two of our, the hundred and eight students that took the exam scored a two-fifty to two-eighty. So it wasn't, two-forty is the cutoff for proficient. So it wasn't like our students were just making proficient. They were closer toward being advanced than they were, or more students were in the advanced area than proficient. And over the last three years, we've improved our advanced numbers from thirty-two percent to sixty-four percent in ELA, went to advance. In math, ninety-seven out of a hundred and seven students scored two-fifty to two-eighty. So again, we're well past that, just, you know, doing well enough. And we've increased our numbers a couple of percentage points from sixty-eight, sixty-two to sixty-eight in the last three years. And in science, we've increased our advanced proficient numbers fifteen percent from 2012, and over the last three years, our advanced numbers have gone from twenty-four to forty-two percent advanced. So in closing, we're a very high-achieving school and district, and I'd like to congratulate our students, teachers, support staff, parents, and the entire Lunenburg community for placing such a high value on education in this town. And it takes a village to raise these kids, and we certainly have a strong one, so. Any questions?
No, it's great, actually, Brian. I think we should, we should all be proud of all the students in all the district. Of course, there's always room for improvement, and I know you're going to all work towards continuous improvement, but I think we have a lot to be proud of in the town, so, thank you.
Just to follow up on that, in each of the schools, whatever our year-to-year issues may be, you know, you don't get to a high school, you know, without having been built on that by what came before it. So I want to thank all the staff, teachers, administrators for that.
Great. Thank you.
Dr. Berthew, in the committee, you know, thank you for those remarks, because that really sums it up. We have some charts, and we'll share them with you in an upcoming meeting, that really look at cohorts of students as they've moved from, because MCAS has been a part of our students' reality now, many of them since they were third and fourth graders. And so we have that historical data where we can look at those cohorts that stay pretty much the same as they move through, because it's a pretty stable population that we work with here in Lunenburg. We lose some of the students there as they move from the eighth to ninth grade, with them going to Montech or other kinds of secondary opportunities. But you can really see a very distinct trend line upwards in terms of the students' performance, and that's based upon the work, of course, that the students are doing, but the curriculum and the instruction that they're receiving from the teachers. You know, our subgroups, we continue to really work to maintain an inclusionary model where we're providing those supports, where we have the tiered instruction for students. Those particular aspects of our program have been challenged the last couple of years because we've been trying to keep the appropriate level of resources there. It's not making excuses, it's just saying that that's been the reality of we're needing to shift tried-and-true kinds of experience in terms of what results in the gains, particularly for some of our neediest learners, to make sure that their growth continues as we go through these difficult financial times. And I just want to commend the creativity and the stick-to-it-ness of the faculty and staff and administration in terms of how we're going about doing that, and certainly the hard work of the students and the support of the parents as well. So thank you. All this information is available at the DESE website. If you'll just go, we were trying to show some of the data. It's very rich. You can drill down very far on these numbers, and all the individual student results have been distributed. They went out with students last week, so if you didn't receive them, parents, please call the buildings as soon as possible. They're out there.
If you don't mind for one second, Mrs. Calms. Last week, when this first came out, I did want to point out that I took the opportunity to just take the high school scores and compare them with our neighboring districts. And Lunenburg is doing extremely well compared to our neighboring districts. The only district in the area that was comparable was Acton-Boksboro. And given the financial challenges and restructuring and all the difficulties we've had for the past several years, I think that speaks volumes of the great job that our faculty and students are doing.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else, Mrs. Calms?
No, that's the superintendent's report for...
Okay.
This week.
Abby, student report.
Thanks.
All right, so the Marari Brass Quintet, which is a professional instrumental group, is coming to the high school next Thursday. They're doing a workshop for the band and chorus during the day, and then a performance with the band that night at seven. Float meetings started this week, so everybody's into full swing with that. The Spanish club is getting ready for their annual hats and mittens drive, so that'll be going for the whole month of October.
Thank you.
So what's this year's theme for the floats?
Seasons. So seniors have winter, juniors have fall, sophomores have summer, and then freshmen have spring.
Excellent. Thank you.
Dr. Berthew?
Yes, ma'am.
I apologize, I did forget that I wanted to give you the October 1st enrollment update, and I do have it up here. It compares it to October 1st. October 1st is a very significant student count within the Commonwealth, and these kinds of student datas are transmitted in terms of our enrollment to the DESE four times a year, and the October one is a student count time that really makes a lot of impact in terms of funding going forward. The funding formula lags behind. It's based upon a couple of years, but these are very, very important numbers for us. So you can see, as compared to last year, the primary school has exactly, at this time, the same number of students that have been enrolled. There are about two less students that are actually attending each day at five-hundred and eight versus five-hundred and ten, however. Turkey Hill Middle School, you'll see, last year at this time, they had five-hundred and one students enrolled. This year, four-hundred and eighty-six. That's the overall enrollment. The daily attendance is four-hundred and eighty-one as compared to four-hundred and ninety-six. And the difference is students that are enrolled in our school and our students of the Lunenburg Public Schools may be receiving their educational program outside the district. So the numbers of four-eighty-one is the number of students that are coming to school and attending Turkey Hill Middle School every day, and so that's how those counts are taken. Then you see for the high school was at six-hundred last year, very close to that, five-ninety-six this year. And we'll remember that that eighth grade class has moved in, and that eighth grade class has a hundred and forty-four students in it. It is one of the last large classes, if you will, that we've had in Lunenburg, and you'll see that there are five-hundred and seventy-nine students attending on a daily basis there at Lunenburg as compared to five-hundred and eighty-five last year. We have then the twenty-six students that are, twenty-four students that are placed out of district, and then you see up here, two students that are preschool students come in only for some related services, and so that's that particular count. And so overall, an enrollment of fifteen-ninety-four versus sixteen-thirteen the previous year. And just to let you know, in terms of Lunenburg residents, we have one-thousand-five-hundred and forty-four Lunenburg residents attending in that count, forty-three are school choice students, and then we still have seven students from Shirley who attend the high school under non-residents. So that's an overview of the enrollment report, the most up-to-date one that we have.
Great.
students, and then we still have seven students from Shirley who attend the high school under non-residents. So that's an overview of the enrollment report, the most up-to-date one that we have.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna have a report from our school building committee. Mike, would you like to?
Certainly. The activities since our last meeting, we've been, again, very busy. The superintendent and I met with the PTO to go over the latest iteration of the update slides, which are also available on our website. We were, took a lot of good questions, and we also had offers from the PTO to assist us in community education by hosting open houses and, you know, home coffees, in, in other words, inviting, you know, friends and neighbors to come in in small groups to ask questions of us in terms of the, the building project. In fact, I believe Ms. Shapiro is the first volunteer to come forward to, to host one that's, that's being organized. At Monday's meeting, the important business that was done was the review and approval of the schematic design and cost estimate. The schematic design is basically what you have, we've been showing for some time with, with some refinements. So what you're seeing as the schematic design submission is pretty much what we've been talking about, with little alterations along the way for various needs that have, have cropped up. The cost estimation took up the largest part of the discussion. Now, the process of cost estimation is that our CM@Risk, Schalmit, and our owner's project manager, Justin Lesser Associates, do their own cost estimation based on the schematic design and sort of outline of specifications. JLA hires a outside estimator, they both come with their numbers, they then get together and they kind of crunch each other's numbers and, and challenge each other's assumption on what those numbers are. During that process is where the value engineering gets done, which is that they take a look at whether substituting a certain material versus another would wind up with an equal quality but a lesser cost. And so that process also happened. In the process of value engineering, they actually were able to identify close to two million dollars in cost savings just at that first run at it. The bottom line is that the construction costs for the school will be sixty million two hundred and sixty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars. Of course, there's additional costs that we have to recognize, what we know as the soft costs, the design fees, the contingencies, the certain other administrative costs. So if we could take a minute, in front of you is that one-sheet summary of the schematic design total project budget summary. And if you look down, you know, you see the line item for feasibility study, that's already, that's included in the total cost, but basically it's already been, we've expended seven hundred and nineteen thousand of the, of the seven hundred and fifty. So the, the feasibility costs are gonna get rolled into the total project costs. You see the cost for administration, the architectural and engineering, and this is from design development through closeout. So this is, the feasibility study has already, is already paying for what, what we see right now. So the schematic design and cost estimate comes out of the feasibility study. So the architecture and engineering is through design development through the closeout of the project. The next is the CM@Risk, which is the Schalmit, which we have, who have taken on to work with us. The CM@Risk, you know, gives us a point with the, for reimbursement with the MSBA. The purpose of the CM@Risk is that value engineering. It also allows us to invite bidders rather than the open bid-build project, process. And the, the MSBA likes the process because they believe that it controls costs and ensures quality. Then you see again the construction costs for the, for the, for the building. Off-site improvements. Now, the offsite, there is really no off-site improvements, it's the only line that they had to stick in. What that number represents, that three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, is the cost of the greenhouse, which the MSBA will not recognize as a reimbursable item. Miscellaneous project costs, furnishings and educational technology. This is just a, a per-student number for, that the MSBA allows. The potentially eligible construction contingency, this is a standard, this is an industry standard of five percent of the construction cost. And then there's an owner's contingency that I believe was, I can't remember what the, what the, what the standard was for that, but it's, it's a, an amount that is potentially there but not necessarily to be used. The design enrollment, as you see, is eight hundred and twenty students. The total square footage of the building is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, and the construction cost per gross square foot is three hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-five cents. Now, when we take a look at the MSBA grant versus the local share, we were a bit surprised at the, at the results, and I think one of the factors that we were not really aware of until all the numbers were completed was that the MSBA has a standard per square foot cost that they reimburse at. Their standard cost is, is a base of two seventy-five plus certain reimbursements for other costs which are already in there, which brings our eligible number from the MSBA to two hundred and ninety-one dollars. So that means that, and three sixty, we have been informed by our consultants and through some very brief other research, three sixty a square foot is typical of school construction at this point. We'll be looking at that further. I'll talk about, you know, the, the way forward in a moment. So part of what is driving the, the split is the fact that the MSBA is not recognizing construction costs that exist in the market today. We're, through the town manager and the, their, their bond folks, they took a look at what this would look like as a twenty-year and a thirty-year bond, and the, they are, and they're estimating high in terms of the, of the interest rate. They're, they're estimating it at four percent, whereas, you know, right now, there's, there may be possibilities for much, for lower, as, as much as, you know, almost a percentage point lower. And so if it were a twenty-year project, the effect on the average homeowner's tax bill, in other words, the average tax bill, I understand in town is somewhere in the neighborhood of four thousand dollars. The average tax bill would be affected by six hun, I'm sorry, I should have had that in.
Six hundred and fifty.
Six hundred and fifty dollars, which amounts to about fifty-one point five dollars, fifty, fifty-one dollars and fifty cents.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five dollars a, a month. Thanks for the correction. The, as a result of the discussion, after reviewing and discussing the impacts, the committee voted unanimously to, to approve the schematic design and cost estimate as a, a means of meeting the deadline of tomorrow for the MSBA. In addition, the committee unanimously appointed a working group to work with the architect and the owner's project manager on looking at the designs and seeing if there are any cost savings that can be found. That group will be meeting next week, the tenth, to begin their work. They will be kind of digging into the project, if you will, and, and seeing if there are ways that we can find cost savings. That was the, the major piece of business by the, by the committee last night, was the approval of the cost estimate and the appointment of the working group. This group hopes to have its work completed prior to, a week or two before the MSBA meets to approve the, the project, so that if there are any modifications that can be made, they will be made at that point. In terms of the work of the committee on community education, we are beginning the scheduling of forums. We're looking at a date later in this month to hold a, a community forum at the high school. We're looking, you know, for a weeknight for one of them, we're looking for a Saturday for another one, which may, may wind up in the beginning of November. We reached out to the Eagle House to meet with the folks at the Eagle House to explain the project to them. We are concerned about the impact that this may have, and we want to make sure that the folks at the senior center understand the project and what the, and why it's necessary. We're also looking for others to help us with open houses. If there's anybody watching tonight who would like to, for us to come meet with them and a bunch of their neighbors, we'd be happy to do so. We're, we're looking to make sure that we can answer as many questions as possible prior to people coming to town meeting. We believe that if people get the facts and are informed about what, why we, we need this, why it's the right choice, why it's the, the way to go, that they will, they'll want to support it. Even if they don't support it, they'll know what the impact will be if they don't. I, I want to point people to the website. We currently have a wonderful video presentation that, are we doing that?
I think we'll be watching that.
Are we gonna be watching that tonight? Great, that, that's a great segue. This has just been posted on the website a couple of days ago, and this is a, a video that Mr. Londa and some folks that he knows put together, and it, it really shows the current conditions at the, at the high school and the challenges that we have in, in delivering an educational program. The fact that we're getting, you know, results with the facility that we have only makes me think what we can accomplish with a new facility.
So before we go, I don't know if you want to skip to that in a little bit, or?
Are we gonna do that now, or?
It's, it's scheduled for later in the meeting, but we can jump to it in a minute if you'd like. But I did want to point out to people that it's been, coming up on two years ago, that the school committee unanimously agreed that the appropriate path for the district was really to develop a co-located middle-high school facility, and the reason that the committee, after, we put together, together a subcommittee with members of the administration, the school committee, the community, and we looked carefully at the costs and benefits, the challenges and opportunities for a variety of approaches to, to a new building. And from an educational standpoint and an educational efficiency standpoint, it was very clear to us that the, the middle-high school co-located facility was the optimal choice. It allows sharing of, of teachers, it allows much more efficiency and increased opportunity for our students. But this is also a big number, Mr. Mackens.
Absolutely.
So I know that the building committee has looked at other options, like a renovation, a high school only renovation. Can you take a minute to walk us through what the costs of those other opportunities, alternatives might be?
Let me see if, is that a slide you can get to, Mrs. Combs?
You know, right here in our FAQ at the website, there's a real quick analysis that, it talks about the various options that were presented there, and in our, the presentation that's at the website as well, I think there are three slides, and I'll go back to those. But basically, you see that they talked about a limited high school renovation, that would be not any kind of addition, and thirty-five million is, is what the cost of that would be. Now, it's unclear whether that would be supported by the MSBA because their minimum building requirements in terms of the per, student per square footage analysis is that the high school, as it currently exists, is about ninety-eight thousand square feet. Correct, Mr. Londa? Do I have my figures right? And for a student population of four hundred and forty-five, which is what our projected high school enrollment is for the design enrollment, there would be a need for a hundred and eighteen thousand square feet in the high school to meet the requirements. There would need to be significant kinds of changes with regard to the science labs, which we had identified as being grossly undersized. Our science labs currently are eight hundred and fifty square feet, and the current standard for a science lab is one thousand four hundred and forty square feet. So that, just tinkering around the inches, if you will, are not going to bring us into a building model that the MSBA meets the MSBA requirements and therefore jeopardizes access to funding to assist with that. And those costs were basically projected to be thirty-five million. Then the renovation and limited addition to accommodate the students was at, at forty-one million, and that would move us into the realm where MSBA participation is there. You saw the numbers around the, the new and replaced six through twelve that came out of the committee and looks at our, our current configuration and how it improves the educational program, a six through twelve, a co-located six through twelve, instructionally makes sense and from an efficiency and sustainability model makes sense as well. New is seventy-five million. If we did renovation addition, that was projected to be seventy-four million. A portion of that cost is the disruption to the educational program that you can't factor into dollars, but you can factor into where do students go to be safe as you're disrupting the environment of a high school in a remodeling project, particularly a high school with the amount of asbestos-containing materials that Lunenburg High School has. And so a six through twelve renovation addition was estimated to be basically the cost of a new billion, building, as you see there, seventy-four versus seventy-five. And then a new replacement for nine through twelve, oddly, was estimated to be at fifty-two million dollars was the estimate there.
So before you leave that, can I boil that down to what it looks like to me? My interpretation of this is, for the same price of building a new six to twelve school, we could just barely fix up the building we have and still be worrying about accreditation? Or we could renovate the high school and, and throw everybody into chaos for two years? Or we could do what we're planning to do, which is to build a brand-new school for six to twelve and rip down the old high school afterwards? So the costs are effectively the same for the three of those options, given the MSBA reimbursement?
And, and, and again, to, to keep in mind, if you did a limited renovation for nine through twelve, or you just did a new nine through twelve, that would mean that we would still have to deal with the capacity issues within the three schools that we have, which might force us back into a four-school configuration, which would require renovation of another school. And we don't, and that, that would add costs that
Would not be reimbursed.
Would not be reimbursed. Or, or potentially would not be reimbursed.
They wouldn't be reimbursed for at least ten years.
Right. So those are, those are So those are not viable. The nine-through-12 options are the non-viable options. The limited high school renovation at 35 million, if you look at the new school, the minimum local share is 37.9 million. So to put 35 million into a school that, of your own money, because it's not going to be reimbursed by the, it's highly unlikely that it would be reimbursed by the MSBA because it still doesn't get us to where we need to be in terms of the space within the building that, and we still are dealing with a, you know, a 55-plus-year-old structure, that means that for the additional 2 million that we're talking about, which would be, you know, over 20 years or even 30 years paid back, we would get a building that we could live with for 50 years.
Right. Okay.
I just wanted to mention one more thing in terms of our outreach. We will be meeting with the finance committee on the 10th of October. That will be televised. We will be going through the entire presentation again. We will also be discussing the cost estimate, and, you know, expect a lively discussion from the finance committee.
I would too.
And I believe that's it, except to just again to remind people to visit the website. We do update it regularly, and as I said, the presentation on the current conditions of the school is up there now. There's also our current version of the slide presentation and the updated frequently-asked questions. We ask people that if they do have a question that they haven't seen answered yet to please write to us at buildingproject@lunenburgonline.com, right? And also, we do have a Facebook page, which we're regularly adding to. I monitor it and answer questions that people put in there. We have a, we're up to 228 likes. We'd like to see that expanded, so please share that with your friends, because this is another good way to stay informed about the project. And with that, I think I'm completed.
Anything you'd like to?
Unless there are any questions from the committee?
I don't think so, at this time.
Okay. And I think we might as well, you know, we were planning to review the video later on when we get to the capital plan, so why don't we just do that? Is that okay with you?
Absolutely.
So we'll move on to our new business. The first item there is superintendent's goals. Just to remind you, as I mentioned earlier, we had a two-evening workshop last week focused on developing goals for both the superintendent and for the school committee, and I think it was productive. Mrs. Combs, would you like to describe your recommended goals for this year?
Certainly. I just need to get to them. Yes, and thank you, Dr. Berthium, all the members of the committee and the administrative team that last week did spend Tuesday evening and Wednesday evening from about 6 until 9 o'clock on both of those evenings. Mr. Joe Dillon facilitated the workforce, and I really want to express our appreciation to Mr. Dillon. Some of you may recall, Mr. Dillon, a couple of years ago, served as our interim principal there at Lunenburg High School. And we did have a very productive time, and as a result of that, we shared a lot of discussion about our current district improvement plan, that focus is on student learning, it focuses upon technology, also facilities is one of the major goals of our district improvement plan. With the new educator evaluation model, all educators in the district are, right now, finalizing their SMART goals for next year, and the superintendent is evaluated under that same basic system. And so I am bringing forward to you three goals for us to focus upon. The goals are focused upon student learning, professional practice, and are just one of our district improvement goals. And so what I am recommending to you and asking for your support in terms of endorsing is a student learning goal that really is focused upon community service learning for our students. I think one of the things that is remarkable about the Lunenburg community and its students and its citizens is the fact that when there are problems to be solved, they come together and figure out how to do that. And there's a lot of work in terms of communities to think about the ways to take our environment and make it better for everyone. And so capturing that and continuing that fine tradition, as well as the tradition of being participating citizens in our democracy in this country, community service learning is a way that our students are able to develop those critical thinking skills, to have very authentic learning by being involved in projects that make a difference and figuring out how to make that difference. And at the same time, they're connected back to the Common Core standards. And so you basically take and do what educators for years have always done and really worked to do with our students is saying, why is this important? Why does this matter? Why does it matter if I can write a persuasive argument or letter to the chair of the school committee in order to affect a change in policy? And that's what community service learning does. We have had some trainings in the district, but we certainly haven't saturated the district and our instructional staff with training at this point in time. And we have some nice models of some community service learning. There are distinct best practices around that. And so the goal is a three-year goal, actually, within benchmarks the next three years. So the long-term goal would be by the end of 2016, at each grade level, all students would participate in a community service learning project that include Common Core standard learning outcomes. And so by April of 2014, my goal is to provide the school committee and the public a map of the current community service learning projects in the district that are addressing Common Core standards and which reflect best practices for community service learning. And also, at that time, to be able to articulate the number of staff that have been formally trained or not. And that would basically then position us to move into the next two years where we would look at by April 2015, having curriculum maps where community service learning projects were developed and implemented for 50% of the grades, K through 12. And likewise, 50% of the staff would have received formal training in community service learning development. And then for, by April 2016, to complete that, so 100% of the grades have a benchmark community service learning project that is tied to the Common Core of learning and reflects best practices. So that's overall the student learning goal that I am recommending to you.
Okay. Would you recommend we change our graduation requirements at all to include community service activities?
You know, I think that that's a conversation that needs to take place. You know, there is a lot of community service that is going on at the high school. Community service learning may take a little bit of a different approach to it, but I certainly think that that's a very worthy conversation to have and then come with a conclusion recommendation out of. But that would be something that we would want to include our students and faculty in the community, I think.
Any questions on the first goal? Yeah? Okay. Do you want us to vote them one at a time or all at once?
No, I just thought we'd pause in case there were questions in between, so.
Okay.
Okay.
We're good?
Okay. The professional practice goal is that I've really felt the last year, as well as this year, that I haven't spent the time that I need to and want to in each one of the classrooms. So under my professional practice goal, I'm presenting to you a proposal whereas I would commit, this accounts for about 30% of my work week would be spent in the classroom, visiting classrooms, that I would commit to at least 10 visits per building each week. And to support our administrators as well as our teachers in the overall implementation of the new educator evaluation model, calibration is important in that. The administrative team and myself will be continuing our training. We're looking at about 18 hours of training with, through a course that helps with the calibration as well. But we would look at five of those 10 in each building being done in conjunction with another administrator, either the building principal, the building assistant principal, as well as Ms. Beehosh would be another appropriate administrator to do those visits jointly. And so those particular visits would be less than 10 minutes. They're not formal visits, were related to the educator evaluation data that's collected. And so, but they are what we refer to as the walkthroughs, and feedback will be provided.
So that looks to me like you'll be visiting each teacher about once a month?
I think that's what it comes out.
I think that's outstanding. Yeah, that's great. Any questions on that goal?
I just think it's great.
Okay. Thanks.
And then in support of the district improvement plan, and as I articulated before, we have several goals that we will continue to work towards. You heard about the student learning and instructional goals that we have around our assessment results, but also, our district improvement plan does have a facilities goal on it, and I've selected that goal to focus on. And the goal that I'm recommending to you is that by January 2014, I will work with the school building committee in engaging the Lunenburg school community, as well as the community of Lunenburg, in a shared vision of educational opportunities and enhancements that are associated with the new building facility project, to include at least two public-community-wide forums, three meetings with each building's faculty and staff, and at least 10 other small-group meetings and presentations. And I see those as being not only with town committees and boards, but neighborhood gatherings like the ones that, you know, we talked to the PTO about providing, and any community group that will, you know, allow us time on their agenda to talk about the project. The evidence that will be presented around this will be a log that's maintain identifying the meeting, the number of people in attendance, and also, there will be some documents that come out of that, including, I think what you alluded to earlier, Dr. Berthium, in terms of our discussion, is really not talking about the building in terms of the bricks and mortar, but the opportunities that are opened up for our students, given current 21st century facility to be educated and attend and learn in.
Okay, great. Are any questions on that goal? Okay. So I seem to remember, in the evaluation process, we should also get an interim, have an interim period, instead of just waiting till April, where we look at progress towards goals. And can we schedule that for maybe the second meeting in January?
Sure.
Is that reasonable?
I think that's the...
Okay. Any discussion on these goals? If not, then we'll need a motion to accept them as the goals for the year.
So moved?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous? Thank you. Okay. In addition to the superintendent's goals, the school committee put together a set of goals. And let me see if I can figure out where one is.
We have goal one and two here.
Excellent.
And goal three there, and goal four there.
Okay. The school committee has four goals, but the first goal is really a requirement for all of the other goals to make any sense at all, and because our supposition for envisioning the future of the district was that the new building project would be in place. It's very clear to the five members of the school committee who were all here last week, unfortunately, we couldn't all be here tonight, but we all feel very strongly that it's, there is no argument that it's in the best interest of our students and our community to build this new co-located middle-high school project. And so the first goal for the school committee is to do everything within our power to advocate on behalf of our students to ensure passage of the town vote for the new middle-high school. And the success criteria for that one's very easy. If the vote passes, we're successful, and if it doesn't, we will not be successful. We have every intention of being successful on that goal. Our second goal is a financial goal, and in this case, it's to develop a plan that reduces and/or eliminates by 2017 all fees for busing, parking, and activity in the Lunenburg School District. And this comes from a shared understanding that public education is supposed to be free. It's a free and appropriate education for all of our students. We have deviated from that principle over the past five or six or seven years, as we've been driven by financial constraints. And the committee feels it's important, particularly as we're asking the community to come forward with the funding for this new building, if we set a goal of reducing and eliminating our fees without consequently impacting the educational program in the district. So that's our second goal that we've proposed.
May I just interject for a moment?
Absolutely.
And the discussion around that also includes the fact that we're not looking to use money within the current budget or to seek additional funds from the taxpayer, but to find ways that we can increase revenues through grants, sponsorships, other, whatever we can come up with. Whatever our plan is. And the plan is, the first step of the plan, obviously, is to, is to develop a plan to look at those things.
Right. So our deliverable for this year is by April, and intend to have a plan developed which includes benchmarks for the following years with the goal of reducing these fees. This is a five-year goal. Our third goal is to expand curriculum offerings for all of our students, both during and after school. We had a lot of discussion about curriculum opportunities that used to be available to our students and are no longer, about curriculum opportunities that should become available to our students, given the way the world has changed, and basically the importance of keeping the opportunities available to our students to succeed in the future, in the 21st century. And so unfortunately, we are going to do a lot of planning in this year, since we did this visioning. Our deliverable for this year would be to develop a plan which looks at the current budget and opportunities, as well as community and corporate sponsorship, to create opportunities for curriculum expansion. And we intend to have a plan for that also by April, and we hope to implement that plan by the time we open our new facility in September of 2016. And the fourth goal that we are proposing is to promote community engagement and lifelong learning, which is really a critical part of our mission statement, by transforming our new middle-high school into a community center, in particular, community education center, by finding opportunities to develop educational outreach programs, adult ed programs, to help work with the Parks and Recreation Department to make the school the center of our community in a way that it hasn't been in recent years, partly due to the physical limitations of the facility. So again, we plan, we intend to put together a plan by April of 2014. We'd like to implement a pilot adult education program next year with full implementation of this program by 2017. So the bottom line of all these things is we're going to have to have a number of workshop sessions over the next several months, in addition to working to get this building put together while we work through these plans and come up with actionable plans for April of this year. Any other, any discussion on these goals? Any other, any discussion on these goals? Any thoughts, comments?
Well, as we were working on the goals, we, we felt like each one grew out of the previous one, that, that the organic growth of these goals was really about, you know, fulfilling the, the school mission and, and creating, you know, links to the community that benefits not just the community, but, but it's the symbiotic relationship that we have with our community. The community benefits from us, and we benefit from the community. And we want to be that, that place of honor within the community. And we imagine the school not just to be something that's a benefit, the new school to be a benefit to, to our students, but a benefit to the entire community. We can see that, you know, the facilities have, certainly the improved facilities will have the ability to expand our ability to provide, you know, adult recreation opportunities. We are going to have, you know, once this is completed, a fairly good, you know, you know, little cardio area with, you know, weights and things, and that, that could be something that we could, you know, create a, you know, community, you know, gym opportunity for people, could save their, their money at, you know, Planet Fitness and come down to the school. And so we're hoping that when we think about the school, we think about it not, its primary purpose, obviously, is to the education of our children, but when we talked about one of our goals being lifelong learning, we also should facilitate that lifelong learning by providing opportunities for lifelong learning for the entire community.
Mrs. Collins, when we met last week, these goals came out at the very end, and you didn't have the opportunity to provide, provide any feedback. So is there any feedback you'd like to give us on these proposed goals?
Well, I think they're consistent with addressing some of the areas of need that we've identified over the last couple of years. And I really want to commend the committee for really setting it down on paper and setting the goal, so we can work together towards that. You know, I was thinking just simply about the bus fee and looking at the analysis of the buses being out on the roads, fewer students are, are riding, more students are, are coming in individual cars, either, generally, their parents are bringing them, and just the whole impact on our environment with regard to that. And yet the buses are still traveling the same amount of miles that they were before. About half of a bus is paid for in collecting those fees. And so, you know, our backs were against the wall at the particular time those fees were instituted, and, and I think it's really important for us not to just sit back and say, oh, they're here forever, that we do set some goals to, to remove them. Our students' families are paying, if they are paying for bus transportation, and that would be for students at the high school, so eight through twelve, are paying a hundred and eighty dollars per year for that transportation. So these goals are all consistent with what the building, school building committee has talked about in terms of a facility that will support the educational program, that's a twenty-first century program, a program that we know we've lost some traction around in terms of, particularly in, at the area of technology. This opens the opportunity for us to really look at the engineering, the STEM kinds of classes, and robotics, and those kinds of classes that are going to bring out that creativity and problem solving to support that kind of thinking that our students absolutely have to have in spades going forward. So, you know, I, I think it, these goals represent the things that we've heard from our educators within the system that are important and of a concern, and we really appreciate the fact that the school committee has put, articulated in writing, and are making them front and center in terms of the work that we'll do together.
Okay. Great. Any of you, any of our principals want to chime in and give us feedback? Not obligated to, but... Okay. All right. We need a motion to approve the goals.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Great. All right. We're up to our concussion policy.
In December two thousand eleven, the, the school adopted a policy for the prevention and maintenance of sports-related head injuries, referred to as the concussion policy. That policy is looked at every year by the athletic director and coaches, as well as the school nurses and the administration. The Department of Health has asked us to affirm once again that we have this policy in place, and by means of transmitting a letter. So I just wanted to bring to this committee's attention that that work has been going on, and that I intend with the athletic director, Mr. Pete McAuliffe, to sign and produce to the state a letter about us having a concussion policy that is placed. We are not recommending any changes to this. We feel that what has been put in place is working well, and we have found that parents have become more understanding and informed around this very important issue, and we really have appreciated them working with us to safeguard the students by implementation of this policy and ensuring that students aren't back out on the playing field or involved in PE if they, before it's time for them to be, before they're, they're healed after a concussion. And these concussions, you know, can happen also during PE classes or even in, in music classes, you know, a concussion can occur under various kinds of circumstances. I asked Carrie Ford, who's our coordinator, coordinator for the nurses, to give us some information and statistics around the concussions for two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen. I've also asked her to ensure that going forward that we have this information disaggregated, so we can refer to it each year. But at LHS, there were sixteen diagnosed concussions. Three were in school, thirteen were out of school, but six were related to school sports. Turkey Hill Middle School, there were two diagnosed concussions. Both of those were out of school but reported to the school, because one of the things that has come from this is sensitizing the faculty in terms of what is the impact of that, and what do we need to do for our learners as they're recuperating and maybe not able to be fully present, either physically and even when physically at times mentally because of the results of the concussion, and how we're attentive to that and provide the supports and the extra time for the, the student to heal and then get back in, into the academic learning. And at Lunenburg Primary School, there was one diagnosed concussion that occurred out of school that was reported to the school nurse.
Okay. We don't actually need to vote on this?
No, action is needed. I just wanted to put it on the, the public record.
That's great. Any questions?
Just for, for, for future analysis, it would be helpful when we get the, a report on the concussion information, that when we say, look at out of school, we don't know whether, and six were school sports. We know that school sports were part of the, you know, school program. We don't know the origin of the thirteen out of school. I'm curious as to how many of them were as a result of a sports injury outside of school. I think it's just something to, for us as a community to keep an eye on, and, you know, in our role as, as, as the school committee, I think that would be something that we would want to advocate the best for the students, whether they happen to be with us or not with us.
Do you mean the ones that occurred out of school, the setting where it occurred?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
For awareness, you mean for all of our community sports and everything?
Correct. Correct.
I was just thinking it would be interesting in the future to know which sports, those ones that did happen in school-related sports were. And the reason I say that is because I think there's a lot of misconception out there that they happen in, in football and in the typical contact sports. And I know in the last two or three weeks, I've seen the ambulance at two high school soccer games and at one high school field hockey game. I don't believe they were, I'm not sure, one of them was not a Lunenburg student. I don't believe the other ones were diagnosed as concussions, but they were injuries that could have very easily resulted in a concussion, and they were not that traditional helmet-wearing sport where, you know, I think we, we think that's where you get a concussion. So I just think to raise that awareness that all, you know, injuries need to be evaluated, even if it's not a, you know, typical contact sport.
Okay. So we need to release some executive session minutes, and the proposal is to release the executive session mission, minutes from May fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, June fifth, two thousand thirteen, July seventeenth, two thousand thirteen, and August seventh, two thousand thirteen. Is there a motion to release those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Old business. We're up for the capital plan. Mr. Londa, would you like to join up?
Good evening.
Hi.
The capital plan that we've been briefed on, the last time I brought back with the changes we made to the, the plan, they were to, to asbestos abatement, ceiling replacement at the middle school, and break that into two components. So it'll be a phased project. Phase one would focus on the first floor, which would encompass the hallway, all the classrooms on the first floor, as well as one stairwell. And we're having that, we have that estimated at around a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. I have received some information that were figured into the estimate from the architects, from the asbestos management planners. All the final costs have still not come in, so that, that number may vary slightly. We want to make sure that there's enough funds in there for, for the abatement, replacement of the ceilings, air testing as, as part of the asbestos abatement, and then replacement of any fire retardant that would have to go back in. And that determination hasn't been made at this point, if there would need to be any. The architect would make a recommendation on that, and it's based upon his view of the building and the conditions. But we think it's going to be in and around a hundred and thirty-eight thousand for each year, for both years. The second year, FY sixteen, we have some ceilings that are included in that that are not, that really do not fall under the asbestos part of this. We would have the second floor, which would have asbestos in the corridor, but the, the classrooms on the second floor do not have asbestos in them, as far as the, the fire retardant that would be placed above the ceiling. So that's, however, still an area that if we're replacing ceilings in the school, we should replace all of them, even if they're not necessarily going to be involving in asbestos abatement. And that's primarily because, you know, the school being forty-five years old, the existing one-by-one, one foot by one foot tiles are extremely brittle. They are not replaceable if we, we cannot get spares. We actually cannot even keep the, anything that we were defined in other parts of the building because of some, they're just so brittle, they just fall apart. So that's, that one, one adjustment was to split that into two, two phases and spread the cost, cost over FY fifteen and FY sixteen. The second one was, they get an updated pricing on a shade structure outdoor classroom for Turkey Hill Middle School. The estimate I received on that came in at thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars, included a ten percent contingency on that, which would bring that in forty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-six. Once again, the reasons for that are twofold. One, we do have students that are coming through, they're, that have allergies to, to sunlight, and so this provides an outdoor structure where we could have students, also provides us the option of having an outdoor classroom where if a teacher needs to take a class outside, there's a place where they can work. So it would include a metal, metal-roofed structure of roughly sixteen feet by twenty-four feet, would include a concrete pad under that structure, and three heavy-duty, commercial-grade picnic tables, one of which would be ADA compliant. The third adjustment to the, to this proposed capital plan was the elimination of any items for, for the Posseus Elementary School. And so you see nothing for there. And then finally, I did try to even out costs. I also, you know, reflected additional middle school flooring costs through FY nineteen through twenty, and that's, those are essentially the two significant issues that we have at the middle school with asbestos. The spray-on above the ceiling, which we were proposing to deal with in FY fifteen and sixteen, and then floor tiles throughout the entire building, FY eighteen through FY twenty.
Mr. Londa, do you want to talk about the MSBA's position on floor, asbestos-containing floor tiles? Because I think that's a point of information that came out as we went through this process with the MSBA, and why you're including them here.
The, one of the things we did find out, and when MSBA looked at the high school and looked at the demolitions costs, they said, well, you know, you have, still have asbestos flooring in classrooms, even though the hallways have been cleared, pretty much every classroom still has its original asbestos flooring. It, it has a general policy that says that they would not participate in reimbursement for removal, or the removal of the asbestos flooring as part of the demolition. So it backed out those costs. And it's the rationale behind that goes something like this, is that other school systems have, have removed their asbestos floors at their own cost, therefore, it did not seem fair to them that they should, you know, reimburse schools that had not removed the asbestos flooring. So, you know, that, when we look at the middle school, since these are the two main areas where we have asbestos, it makes sense to try to get them out, it would strike me as, if that policy stayed into effect, should we do a project at the middle school in the future, then that also probably would not be a reimbursable cost.
I think it's an appropriate moment just to interject, Mr. Londa, that one of the things that I didn't give in detail when I gave my report was the, the reimbursement rate that we did receive from, from the MSBA, which was, you know, fifty-eight point five percent on allowable costs. The, one of the ways that we achieved that was that we got one point seven-two percent for our maintenance program, and we've been told by our consultants that that's pretty much unheard of, that most school districts get one or, you know, or less, and that it was really a, a feather in our cap, that the MSBA recognized our maintenance program and recognized that we were taking care of the schools as best we could. Really, it, it, it's a, A, it's a, you know, something that you should be proud of, Mr. Londa, but I think it's also something that we, I want folks at home and, and folks in Lunenburg to understand, we have been taking care of the schools as best we can. The reasons that we're, we're needing to replace the building isn't because we let them go, and it's proof by the fact that the MSBA recognized it by giving us money for it.
I would comment on that to say that, you know, the, there are some substantial limitations of what, what can be done with the existing high school. A lot of it is tied to the hazardous materials that are, that are included. You know, we do have a video for you, for you to review. It's about eleven minutes long. It, it shows existing conditions, and I would tell you that, you know, there's many things that we are really unable to do without getting into hazardous materials, and that is affecting the quality of maintenance. I think that what the MSBA did recognize is that, you know, we have worked through the issues of what needs to be done, we have good procedures in place, we have done, I think, you know, over the long haul, a very excellent job of maintaining the schools, considering the limitations. That being said, when I go out to look at Lunenburg High School, you know, from Mass Avenue... from Mass Avenue, it looks wonderful, quite frankly. Uh, when you get about five feet away from the building, however, you see very, very graphically the significant problems that the building has. Mortar falling out of the joints, it holds the windows in place, uh, numerous cracked windows. It's actually, it would be quite shocking if, if you could pick these out. Now, you can't see them unless you're very, very close, uh, but there are, it's this, this, a video will show, there's, there's well over 100 pieces of broken glass in the high school as of today. All of this really says is that the, the building, uh, as a energy-efficient structure is exceptionally poor. The, uh, we look, we're doing some work with the, uh, with the Green Communities Task Force in town. We looked at the energy usage, uh, of the high school, elementary school complex. Fifth, over 55% of the natural gas usage for all municipal buildings were used just on that one, one complex. So that includes your town hall, which, you know, this is an, essentially an uninsulated building. It includes, uh, the public library, the primary school, the middle school, the Brooks House, uh, the, the Ritter, all those buildings combined do not even make, make, combined, uh, only account for 45% of the energy usage. The high school, uh, is, is exceptionally inefficient and it's where we're actually looking for, for a good percentage of the 20% energy reduction plan, uh, that the town is looking to put together for its buildings. Uh, and then it's, it comes from replacing the high school.
The, I'm sorry, can I hear that again, because I, I want to make sure I got it right? So the expectation is that if the new high school, if and when the new high school is built, that overall, energy use in the town will go down by 20%?
Uh, we know the natural gas usage is, is going to be substantially less, uh, like on the order of about 13%. Uh, we are working with the architects and the engineers to try to come to grips with, with where we think the electric usage is. Uh, the engineers think it's higher. Our data would seem to indicate that with the primary school, that we would see something around, around to four to five kilowatt hours per square foot. So we think there'll be savings there as well, uh, but not as much. But the, the natural gas heating is going to be substantially, uh, larger than the electric, any electrical increases. Uh, but we are concerned about cost nonetheless.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Londa, if you don't mind, um, so we have the shade structure for Turkey Hill in 15, but it's our fourth priority. So the student who will have particular need of that, when will he or she be entering Turkey Hill?
Uh, that student arrived this September.
So it's our, okay. So that's worth making sure that the capital plan understands?
Yes.
Capital planning committee? The importance of that? Any discussion on the capital plan?
Um, in regards to the, um, capital planning committee, who we met today, and of course we didn't have this yet, but, um, they would like to see, um, it's good without Passios and the high school, I think, um, having any requests. They would like to see those documents that you have of the, I think you have a 10-year forecast for what would be required at TCP, and that you have one for the high school too, but I know that's kind of a different thing. But they would like to see what we would be looking at in the future years, should the building project not pass. They don't want to see it, you know, on, for this year, but just to see what...
Mr. Londa can provide that.
Yeah. I know you already have it, so just, yeah.
Anything else?
Um, I don't think so.
Is there a motion to approve the capital plan?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Shall we watch the movie?
Yeah.
So technical, physical.
You can always direct people to the website if you need to.
Yeah, I thought I was gonna go to the website.
I did have an opportunity today to see this for the first time, now that it's been posted up on the website, and, uh, I, I think it's terrific.
My name is Chris, and I am a 2009 graduate of the school. Today, I would like you to accompany me on a tour of the building. The purpose of this video is to show you the current conditions at Lunenburg High School. Lunenburg High School was built in 1957 as a junior senior high school and is now in its 55th year of operation. In those 55 years, the school has undergone both major repairs and many small projects in an attempt to meet evolving needs. The major projects include a two-phase roof replacement and a partial renovation of the heating system in 2004. In 1984, the roof was replaced on most of the building with a tar and gravel mix. But today, at 27 years old, this roof is showing significant signs of failure. Various patches have prolonged the life of the roof, but these are only temporary fixes. Some patches even last less than a year. During stormy weather, students often encounter leaks in the cafeteria, restrooms, and classrooms. Material used for leak prevention near the building's skylights is especially old and inadequate. This further contributes to water damage suffered when it rains. For the last five years, leaks in the cafeteria have been an ongoing problem. At least five separate repairs have been made by school maintenance workers and roofing contractors. Last winter, the school's leak problem was obvious. Water dripped from the ceilings of two classrooms, one restroom and the cafeteria whenever we experienced any snow or rain. In the mid-'90s, the roof over the auditorium and gymnasium was replaced with a rubber membrane. However, as you can see, the interior had already sustained significant water damage by that point. The estimated cost to replace the roof in current dollars is 770,000. This excludes re-roofing the gym and auditorium, which have another seven years of life before replacement would be considered. The high school still has its original single-pane windows. Although these great expanses of glass bring lots of light into classrooms, they are not energy efficient. Moreover, south-facing classrooms along the front of the building are heated excessively by the sun throughout the day. The original window caulking has tested positive for asbestos. Consequently, it is not safe to repair cracked windows without special equipment. The building currently has over 100 windows that are cracked and remain un-repaired. Window replacement is expensive and frequently requires a 20-year payback period. Since the future of the building is uncertain, this is a tough capital expense to justify. Today, the projected cost for replacing the school's windows is $1,044,000. Compliance with the American Disabilities Act is difficult at the high school due to the elevation changes of the building site. Many of the ramps that provide handicap access to the school are too steep and do not meet the ADA standards. Since the 1980s, handicapped students have traveled between the building's upper and lower floors using a stairlift. Although the stairlift is operational, the installation of an elevator has been recommended as a critical upgrade. While some recent efforts to improve handicap accessibility have been successful, such as better interior signage, updated door hardware, and an enlarged front lobby, the problem still persists throughout the school. Narrow doorways make restroom access difficult, and the auditorium lacks appropriate accessible seating. In order for Lunenburg High School to meet the minimum standards of compliance with the American Disabilities Act, an estimated $262,000 in repairs and alterations are required. Asbestos is a large concern at Lunenburg High School. In 1957, when the school was built, asbestos was used widely in construction. It added durability to floor tiles and texture to ceiling plaster, and additionally served as insulation for pipes and caulking for windows and control joints. In this regard, Lunenburg High School is a building of its era. Over 50% of its ceilings are believed to contain asbestos, and although the floor tiles in the hallways have since been replaced, most of the classrooms still contain their original asbestos tiles. In fact, several classrooms contain tiles that are loose enough to be dislodged by a minimal amount of force. Six such classrooms have been marked as necessary for floor tile replacement. The poor condition of the roof makes the school's asbestos problems worse. Water leaks into the building and causes the potentially toxic ceiling material to peel, flake, and fall to the ground. For roughly $12,000, the school is scheduled to have loose ceiling material removed this December. This preventative procedure will need to be done once every year or two for the remaining life of the building. Lunenburg High School's kitchen needs modernizing in both equipment and layout. The cafeteria has been modified over the years to provide both custodial and kitchen storage, as well as an additional serving line. The estimated cost to make the necessary repairs in current dollars is 622,000. Our master plan in 2007 identified approximately $2 million in repairs to upgrade the fire alarm, networking, video cabling, master clock, and PA intercom system. Visual alarms and handicap access to the gym in compliance with the American Disabilities Act are also included in these recommended upgrades. There are also nearly $4 million projected for necessary plumbing upgrades and the replacement of stop valves, the fire suppression system, and the electrical distribution and lighting systems. Currently, $11,550,000 would alleviate these documented shortcomings without making any major changes to the building. Already, our school's major building systems have lasted far beyond their expected lifespan. Because of the outdated infrastructure, meeting the needs of a modern education program is very challenging. To offer some perspective, Lunenburg High School was built when a slide ruler was considered the calculator of choice for students. In particular, the science labs in the high school are inadequate in size and condition. They are currently sized at 900 square feet. However, the current standard for a science lab in a modern school is 1,440 square feet, roughly 60% larger than what our school offers. Only one of Lunenburg's labs has a fume hood installed in the early 1990s. Lunenburg's music room is 948 square feet, but current guidance for modern school building recommends having 1,500 square feet for band and an additional 1,500 square feet for chorus. Today, the music room is so crowded that the ensembles hold class in the auditorium. The practice rooms and the backstage have had to be converted into storage space. Our school's accomplished program has outgrown the space currently allocated to it. Moreover, due to its tiered design, the music room is not handicap accessible. The school's library is 2,320 square feet, but again, current guidance states that a modern school library should be approximately 4,500 square feet. Although about 20 years ago, the library was expanded into an adjoining classroom, the room still has no storage or workspace for the librarian today. Our gymnasium currently has 6,900 square feet, but research suggests that Lunenburg High School requires a larger gym and weight room, as well as three times the existing storage space. Lunenburg High School has served the students well for a long time, but current conditions need to be fixed. The last accreditation report for our school tells us that the Lunenburg High School site and physical plant do not adequately support all aspects of the educational program and the support services for student learning. As a result of the age of the facility, the poor repair of the building, the limited technological resources, and the limited space available in the building, the physical plant does not meet the demands of teaching and learning, the basic expectations of a school's physical plant. The report of the visiting committee from April 14th, 2010 concluded that these concerns dramatically limit the school's ability to meet the education needs of students. I'd like to thank you for joining me on this tour. Again, Lunenburg High School was built in 1957, the same year that Russia launched the satellite Sputnik. Our world has changed quite a bit since then. It is about time for Lunenburg to provide its young people with a facility that will inspire them to shoot for the stars.
Thank you. One question I forgot to ask is that ugly fountain from the front, the front, it will be kept?
We can form a subcommittee to decide.
To decide about the fountain with no water. The waterless fountain. Anything you want to talk about that we haven't heard, John?
Um, you know, I obviously like to thank Jamie Rowe and my sons Christopher and Patrick for helping out together.
You did a nice job.
Very nice.
That's great. Since you're our public, John, do you have any public comment?
I do not.
Again, I wanted to thank you for that, for that work. It's just, it's, it's really terrific, and I just wanted to mention again for the folks at home that this is up on the website, so if you, if you want to see it in, in all its glory, just go to the, uh, go to the website and click on it and, uh, watch it at your leisure. Uh, I'd pass it along to your friends. It's, uh, very informative.
If you don't mind, there was one item that, um, didn't quite make it on the agenda that we should probably talk about with John?
Yes. John was just going to give an update around, uh, a policy that I believe was passed, adopted by the, uh, the Board of Selectmen.
That's correct. Uh, last night, uh, the Board of Selectmen did approve a policy, uh, it's a fuel efficiency policy for vehicles. Uh, the gist of the policy essentially is that going forward, the town would be purchasing fuel-efficient vehicles, uh, and would ask that the town departments that have non-exempt vehicles, which the school department, uh, has, uh, will have two of those, uh, the G6 sedan and the, the light pickup truck, that those in, in the next 10 years be looked at for replacement, uh, to meet, uh, the miles-per-gallon goals that Department of Energy Resources has set, uh, for the type of vehicle they are, whether it be two-wheel, two-wheel-drive sedan, or, uh, you know, four-wheel-drive pickup truck. Uh, the, uh, this is one of the criteria for the town's, uh, being selected as a green community. Uh, there are five criteria, so there are two more criteria that are still, that they're working on. This last one is the energy policy, energy efficient vehicle policy, and the school department is asked to ratify that, and the superintendent of school would ratify, can ratify that, that we would follow that policy that the Board of Selectmen adopted last night. And the second one will be, and is still under construction, is this 20% energy reduction goal for the town in the next five years. And, uh, like I said, that one has not gone to the Board of Selectmen yet, but it's, it's being worked on between myself and, uh, the, the town's, uh, building manager.
Okay. Have you guys had a chance to read the fuel-efficient vehicle policy? And we, this is not enough, this is not a school department policy. We don't have to do the three readings. We just...
Correct.
Read it and vote on it today, right? Do you have a recommendation?
Recommend approval.
Any thoughts or a motion?
Uh, if we adopt the Town of Lunenburg Fuel-Efficient Vehicle Policy... We adopt the town of Lunenburg fuel-efficient vehicle policy.
I will second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Okay, so we're up to reports. I don't have a FinCom report. School councils, have they been meeting?
Um-
Sounds like they're going to.
The primary school council met last week and went over last year's school improvement plan, getting ready to begin work on this year's school improvement plan.
PTO?
PTO has not met since the last-
Yeah.
Oh, no, it was, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. It was last week. I was thinking it was the week before that. Yes, great response actually to the superintendent and Mr. Mackin's report on the building project. There was, there were a lot of great questions and enthusiasm and some emails sent out asking people to, you know, participate in helping to spread the word. And the other thing they did was picked the date for the haunted house, which is Friday, November 1st, which is usually a great community event and a good fundraiser for the PTO.
Great. So our policy subcommittee's not here today. Capital planning, we just approved a capital plan for you.
Yes, and I believe Mrs. Combs and Mr. Londa are meeting with the capital planning committee next week.
Great. Wellness, anything?
Haven't met since the last meeting.
Okay, and Paccel?
Not that I'm aware of. I, I know they have planned meetings, but I'm not sure that one has been held yet.
Okay. And Todd is our building reuse person, so unless John has comments?
I think John was at that last meeting, so he might be able to-
The building reuse committee met on Monday, so I did attend a part of the meeting before the school building committee meeting. So they continue to look at all options for the Passios. And this week, they are planning on having a, a building developer come in and take a look at the Passios tomorrow to, you know, look at what possibilities that might have and then what it might take to be able to do that.
Great. All right, do we need an executive?
No, we don't.
Okay. Then I think we're ready to adjourn.
Submoved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Londa.
That wasn't bad, considering the agenda.